Down and a multitude of branches throughout the parks. Greg did a great job out at the airport and so our connection with our, our, our fire, our police chief in the city with the accidents, it was just a coordinated effort and a shout out to those departments for their leadership. The second update is a COVID update tonight and just a reminder that our health director, Randy Evans and Dr. Chris Urbina will be in attendance on next Monday on the 27th for a COVID update and to answer any city council questions. Today, the one week cumulative positive case count that CDC releases about 415, 430 every day, Monday through Friday, was 129.4 cases. The one week positivity rate was 3.8% today, which is down from 4.7. So those were all, all good numbers today. We also however, received a late afternoon email from Director Evans regarding the Omicron variant and then the concern about that in the state. There was, there is now 11 days of stabilized COVID hospitalizations and I do not have the specific patient count at either Parkview or St. Mary Corwin this evening. That's it for a COVID update. I do have just one comment about ARPA. There is planned a January 10th work session full update with a summary from the 2021 ARPA approvals from city council and an update about the 2022 plans for continued review of the, of the requests that have been submitted to date. And lastly, I'd like to remind council and mayor is hosting an outgoing city councilor's reception on next Monday evening from five to six on the first floor in the memorial hall pre-event room. There was an invitation to the community that's been out in the newspaper and there is invitations are also in the public chieftain, city website, city Facebook pages. And there is no work session then planned for next Monday evening. And that does conclude city updates this evening. And if you have any questions of me or any direction for reports for next week.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Counsel winner, do you have any?
Oh, sorry.
All right, we'll move on to number.
Oh.
3.8. Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Go ahead, Counsel winner.
Um, I have a question for Laura. You know, it seems that the media and then also just tonight, everybody's focused on the Omicron virus and has anybody been in the hospital for that or is it still mainly Delta? And if so, why aren't we still pushing Delta as, as the problem?
Counselor winner, I do not have that update, but I know that the health director will provide that update next week and also likely throughout the week and email updates. I can, did you receive the email he sent out earlier this evening or late afternoon?
I don't, I don't recall. I, I checked both emails. I don't, I didn't see anything.
Let me forward that one to you right now and then that will just provide an opportunity to respond with that question.
Okay, sounds good. And then also, also, also I just wanted to clarify something because there were quite a few Rangers at the last council meeting that were supporting the Rangers that showed up and I just, I just wanted to clarify this. So it sounded to me like Dorothy Butcher reached out to the Rangers that she solicited CSAC and then wanted us to take seven grand from Posada team program? Was that what everybody got from that? Cause I'm, I'm getting more emails from, from the Rangers and I, I just am confused about what's going on there.
It's Bob, they all showed, they've never asked for money. I mean, to me, that's, that's a big mistake. They were in, they didn't complain about the Kansas, the Colorado Springs money. They just said what a good job they did. I'm assuming they wanted to sell us that the fact that if they came back for money, we would consider them as well as the Springs. And then I'm sure they're hoping that we have a problem with giving money to an organization outside of Pueblo. And I think that pretty much describes where they were coming from. I mean, they should have been here years ago asking for money. It's like they just woke up all of a sudden and heard about the Springs money and Dorothy organized them, yes. That's all I know.
And heard about the Springs money?
The team is, is, the organization is out of the Springs as I understand it, Mr. Attorney? Help me. Yes, the answer is yes, the organization's out of the Springs. And without asking for a public, what, public Rangers were saying, we do the same thing. Why would you give them money? But we've been too foolish to ask for money.
Okay, alright.
It was a wake up call to them, gee.
Well, it sounded like it was solicited, so I was just concerned about that as well.
I'm, I don't know how Dorothy found out, but she definitely had organized it.
Well, in, in the meeting, in the meeting, she said she reached out to them.
On CSAC, okay. Anyway, that's all I know.
Counsel Flores.
We're gonna get a chance to talk about this, I think, in more detail next week. But to make a long story short, what you have presented, what they presented last week to me is very unorthodox for one reason. We gave the responsibility of CSAC to vet all these programs that were submitted and they provided a report to us, which included that $7,000. It appears to me now that two people that sit on CSAC don't want to agree with the democratic process of their own committee and they want to come now and create a secondary discussion about not including that $7,000. Imagine if that happened to us here on city council. The two people in city council didn't like our budget and then went and solicited. Obviously it's not legal through our city charter, but this seems very unortho, unorthodox. Whether or not the 7,000 should be given or shouldn't be given, in my mind, I don't think that the process allows two of their members to come out and tell us to either approve it or not approve it.
I, I agree, yeah, that's, I agree completely. That's why I brought it up. And she also suggested that we take that 7,000, if you listen to it again, which I had to, because it was kind of convoluted, extremely kind of convoluted. And she said that she wanted on, she mentioned the ordinance number and she wanted seven grand from Posada to go to them. Now, she was also kind of complaining that the YWCA got money, et cetera, but Colorado Springs has money and they have ARPA money and I thought it was odd that she, she solicited them. She did actually say she reached out to them. It was almost like she had a conversation with one of the, the grandmothers and, and you know, it was like, oh, I'm on that committee, I'll get you some money. I mean, that's kind of what it sounded like to me. So, um, I guess we'll find out more later.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Solano. We'll go on to number two on the agenda, which is the Pueblo Energy Advisory Commission update, Mr. Narwaki and Mr. Dante.
Good evening, Chairman Alef. Do you mind if I remove my mask? All right. Good to see you and President Atencio and consul, mayor, consular, chief of staff and Darryl. And I'm not sure who this gentleman is here. Vincent, I haven't met you before.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Anyhow, we're going to give you a little bit of update. This will be the first time we've had an opportunity to come in front of you. And I know you're familiar with Ken Dante because he's often been in front of consul. We do have another member of the advisory commission and John Beehill is a member along with both of us, who's joining us tonight. And all together, we have 15 members. It's a very diverse energy background group, except for me, which, but I do know how to run a meeting, so that's, that's one plus for me. But we have incredible talent and we have people that work in the industry and manufacturing and solar and wind. We have people that work in both utility companies within our areas and Isbell and of course, Black Hills. We have retired individuals from Excel. And then we have people like Ken who just have an incredible amount of knowledge and energy and involved with numerous different groups that are energy related. So I feel very comfortable that the mayor has selected a really good representative group. We have had a little bit of trouble with attendance, you know, part of that could be with the pandemic. We do provide Zoom meetings also. We meet, we've been meeting since we started twice a month since last summer. We felt it was paramount to get this off the ground and, and we spent numerous meetings having some of our fellow members facilitate to get to the point where we divided up into three work groups. And the three work groups would be a policy and, and policy in terms of not only local policy, but also looking at policy at the state level that has to do with energy. And then also just in relation to education and then reducing consumption. And some of those things tonight, Ken will be touching in his presentation. Anyhow, I feel honored to be a part of that committee. Let you know that also the county commissioners, I think Commissioner Wiseman is forming an advisory committee for, for the commission and both our madam clerk, Marissa and myself have been asked to sit on that. So there is some continuity between the city and the county. And I know one of the big things they're going to be looking at is nuclear power. We've talked about it within our, our group, but we just didn't feel at this point in time that that was something that we needed to be delving into. But that will be a topic that comes up even when, within our group. So at that time, Ken, it's all yours. We have 15 minutes and then some questions.
Okay, we have a presentation. As, as Steve said, we formed three committees and I'm the chairman of the reducing consumption, which is basically saying that we need to reduce our energy needs. And we'll get into the presentation when it comes up here. So, you know, the energy trends for the future, we're, we're going to be electrifying everything to combat climate change. Electric generation will hopefully come from renewable, renewables, fossil fuels will be phased out. Anything, making energy by burning carbon is, is, is the issue. So we need to replace that with non-carbon systems. Electric vehicles will replace the internal combustion engine and eventually heating of buildings will be by electric heat. So with that in mind, what, what we've discussed is that we need to get some programs in, in, in Pueblo to start a weatherization and retrofitting of buildings. So residents, commercial and industrial need to improve their buildings to make them energy efficient. Basically reduce the consumption of energy. We, we, we meant, okay, new buildings, you know, should also meet net zero building standards. You don't need to put solar on them, but they, the, the building envelope needs to be tight like a, a net zero building. And I think the presentation after this is going to talk about some commercial buildings or a commercial building. That's a, that's really a great, uh, uh, building. The other thing too, is there's this energy justice piece that we can't leave people behind. So we, we need to help those that can't afford it to improve their, their homes. And one of the things, both Black Hills and Excel offer programs to help on this. So we need to really push those and, and make sure people are taking advantage of, of those programs. Now, of special interest, we've, we've had some discussion about what can we do for the city? And implementing a weatherization and retrofit program for the cities is good. I think, I think this has already been done, but once you're through a round of this, then you kind of regroup and start the next round. So, you know, we, we threw out some numbers. It may be, it may be difficult since, since the first cycle, you get all the low hanging fruit and I think that has been done already, but we need to go through another round of this. And, and you can basically pay for these, for these improvements, just in the savings of, of your energy costs. And we have a couple of examples. Joe Anaki is facilities VP at PCC and he went through a program that he's just, is completing there where they cut their energy bill in about half with, with, and, and they're paying for it with the lower cost of energy. And, and the group there is so impressed by that, that they're pushing this out to other universities. And we already know that CSU has done something similar. They even went to a net zero campus here, here in Pueblo. So our, our, our group is also tied to this 100% renewable by 2035. And we want to see, you know, renewables powering all buildings. Maybe the emergency facilities are backed up with, with battery backup. We're going to see batteries playing an important role in the future. They're going to come on real strong. And then as time progresses and we, and we get to high percentages of renewables, we need to, to start converting buildings to electric heat. Now, any new building, it, it's a lot easier to do these rather than retrofit and weatherize. It's a lot easier and cheaper to, to design the buildings upfront. So what we're saying is, you know, any new city building should be a net zero design, which means all electric and renewable energy to, to power it. And I think the next example that we can actually do this on is the, uh, new transportation building. As, as, as I said earlier, we're going to see about the Pueblo Health Center building that's, that's already done this. Another, another nice thing would be the plan for that whole bus fleet to, to be converted over to EVs. And I think that concludes the presentation.
Thanks, Ken. Let me just add to that, that we'll be resumed meeting after the first of the year and probably meeting on a bi-monthly basis. And then we will anticipate that we'll have each of the work groups give a presentation a little bit more extensive to what they're involved with and how it relates to, to city government and, and our county. And so we'll look forward to that. Also, we had requests from the city and the mayor that we have a staff person that we can work with. We do have the city attorney that's available for us, but we also, we do have the mayor's secretary, Alyssa Par, who is working with us and keep, keeping the minutes, has been very helpful, has been kind of the liaison to the city. But that's my understanding that Scott Hobson will be joining us after the first of the year. Because some of the things that Ken has been talking about and John Beehill has brought up in terms of any audits, we know that Johnson Controls had done audits already within the city. And as Ken referred to the low hanging fruit, replaced a lot of the lighting in a lot of the city buildings to be more energy efficient. And so it'll be good to have somebody who is in tune with what is happening, what has happened in the city as it relates to energy. So I feel very confident that when we come back after the first of the year, that we'll have a little bit more viable information provided. But I do appreciate what Ken has put together for our group. And if you have any questions, please ask Ken.
Thank you. Counsel Schilling.
Steve. And Ken. You said the county is going to start forming the same kind of commission?
Well, I did. I did, I'd said that. I, I did have a conversation with Commissioner Wiseman. I don't think it's a secret. You know, they, they had put off their solar policy for the county. They were going to vote on that, but they have put that on the back burner for now. And somewhat, I will give credit to our mayor, the fact that he had gone ahead and put together this group. And can you hear me all right in my, is this lead doing?
We're just, we had a big beef going in.
Okay, that what's, kind of what's happening is, is Commissioner Wiseman kind of admitted that he needed to kind of back up and, and get more input in the community because there was quite a bit outcry when they were looking at policy change for energy. They were looking at not just renewable energy, but clean energy. And clean energy courses is not, it's like nuclear energy falls within that category. So they had very little citizen input and so I really, I think that's a great move that given the commissioners are making to form that group. And he did invite specifically, he reached out to the mayor and asked about the city clerk. And then he had invited me knowing that I was a chair of our advisory group for the city.
Well, my comment is that's nuts to have two committees, one from the county, one from the city. You got a two-headed snake. And every time the city and the, we all have history on how well the city and county work separately and don't work separately. To me, the most functional thing is to have, because you're all speaking to the same citizens of the same county. That's just a thought, to have a two-headed snake is nuts. And you gotta have, you got, in my mind, you have one organization, because one organization agrees with this and the other one says no, and then you run around a tree and you all turn to butter.
And, and that would be keeping it simpler.
There's a sign up here, I think I have, that says something like, keep it simpler. But to me, that would, otherwise you're going to run in circles and the two are going to be opposing and that's all I got to say. Good luck.
And there could be some duplication, we'll wait and see. But again, I, I think our mayor and the county commissioners, that'd be a, could have in terms of how they want to interface, but right now, a little bit of continuity would be the fact that, that I have been asked to be part of, but there could be some of the other members of our committee that could be on it too. But I don't disagree that.
You don't need two committees, you need one.
I think it could be one, but that would be up to the commissioners and our mayor to decide that.
Good luck. Okay, but thanks for all you're doing. Okay, I just hope you can do it countywide because organizationally it doesn't make any sense.
Don't kill the messenger, please.
Counsel Atencio.
Uh, Bob, you gotta remember that the county wants to push nuclear and that's the reason for their commission basically is, uh, like they said, they want clean energy rather than fossil fuels and stuff. And, and that's what they're pushing for. It's not that they want anything this, but anyway, this is a great start, this, what this commission is doing, because we need to know what our energy needs are for the next 50 years and how we're going to achieve the goals that we set forth in doing that. For instance, equitable distribution of electricity. A lot of people are going to, in the near future, in the next 10, 15 years, a lot of people are going to end up putting solar on their roofs. And what's going to happen is low income people are going to end up paying exorbitant high electricity bills to power companies because they can't afford solar. So it's going to depend on us basically to provide low income solar gardens or whatever. There are cities that are to doing individual solar units for low income individuals on their homes, homeowners. And they're providing solar gardens for people who do not own. There are a thousand ways that are, that is happening out there everywhere else in the country. We've got to catch up by a few years, but this is a good start because some of these things that you outlined, we really should be doing. For instance, the, the city could go 100% renewable tomorrow if we wanted to, but.
Well, thank you, President Atencio. And I do think that equity, equity is an important part of this committee too, because we, living in a community that has a very significant number of people living in poverty, that's why education is so important and what kind of programs are available. I mean, the county already has weatherizations, but if we're going to meet that goal by 2035, there's going to be, have to be a lot more resources available to help all aspects of the community. But, and I think you would agree that we do have some very bright people on the, on the advisory committee.
Counsel McCullough Bichica.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I guess this question is towards the mayor as well, and we talked about the county and the city working together. Are they working together when it comes to reducing energy consumption for our new city county building, the old Wells Fargo? Are you looking toward, to this advisory committee to help you with reducing the consumption?
Well, we're, we're doing that to some extent. I mean, we're talking about, you know, what do we do with the windows that are not energy efficient, those kinds of things. So I, I say the energy concerns of that building are a little bit limited at this point in time. Let me say with respect to the county's committee, I think the county's committee is mostly focused on energy generation, how we're going to generate energy. And that's only a small part of the work that this committee is doing. This committee has basically has the three functions, you know, the, being the energy advisory committee, advise the city on the 100% renewable by 2035. The energy franchises that we have, make sure those, they're taking a look at those franchise agreements with the energy companies here with a public service and with Black Hills. So that's a much broader scope, I think, than, than what the county is looking for. It's just going to focus on that energy generation, how do we replace that generation we're going to lose from Comanche III when it closes early? So I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Kind of. Well, I just think it'd be a great opportunity for you all to work together, the county and the city, as we're coming together in this building. That's, that's the point of the whole building, right, is to work together and be together.
But I think the mayor is correct that this group is much broader and, and I think will have greater impact in terms of being able to provide advice to the, to the mayor and to city council. You would hope that the, the county would do the same, but I do think that it's, it's, as the mayor said, it's more about generating energy and how that's going to be done. And you know, the nuclear was mentioned earlier in the conversation, so I'm sure that will be part of the topic. And also, this advisory committee will be looking at that too and make recommendations back to, to the mayor and city council.
Counsel winner, do you have anything?
I do. Um, you know, I can see why a lot of people don't show up for your meetings. I mean, this, I feel like I'm in a fifth grade science class. You're talking about the same things that we've been talking about since then. I have solar and a lot of people I know have solar. The federal regulations for private energy companies is to be cleaner, burn cleaner and have renewables. That's already underway. Drake and downtown Colorado Springs closed the end of August and they went to natural gas because it burns cleaner. I mean, I think we need to hear something new. A lot of environmentalists are circling right back around to nuclear right now. And what you've told us is what we've been talking about for 40 years and it's here. So I think what we need to do is maybe investigate a little, a little more into the future, like check into solar, see what's going, I'm, I'm sorry, nuclear, see what's going on with that. Tell us how many people in the community have solar. As far as equity, I know that Black Hills Energy gave Posada electricity from a solar garden. They have plans for more solar gardens in poorer neighborhoods. So this is all happening. This is not anything new. So that's, that's all I have. So this is all happening. This is not anything new. So that's, that's all I have.
It probably should be said, you're right, Lori, that these things are happening. But at such a small scale that a two megawatt low income solar garden that Black Hills is proposing to build is only going to serve 200 households, I'm guessing at that. But the point is that we have thousands of people that are low income that need that kind of service. And this committee has got to come up with that answer. How are we going to serve more than just a couple of hundred households? You know, so we've got to come up with what we have now.
Ken, do you want to respond?
I, I mentioned this in a previous meeting. But in this, in the public area, we have 26,000 homes needing weatherization improvement. The county is doing it at a pace of 200. Do the math, that's 130 years to fix those homes. The stuff is progressing because we realize that climate change is impacting our lives. And if we don't do it now, it's going to be more expensive in the future. So we need to be ready for this. We need to accelerate that pace. So between the city and county, we need to come up with a solution. The county program is great. We just need to do more of it, about 100 times more of it.
You know, it seems like the country, well, let's just talk Pueblo. Let's not talk about the country. But it seems like Pueblo is on this collision course to do renewables at any cost. It really makes no difference to many people, how we get there and what it's going to cost people to get there. We just want to get there. The reality of it is, is if, if solar and wind were such great and affordable ways to, to energize or to create electricity, why are they subsidized by the government? As soon as the government quits subsidizing them, they'll be unaffordable for everybody. It's just, it just seems like the only people that are going to get screwed out of this because there's, what? 48% of the, of the citizens of Pueblo live at the poverty level or lower? My gosh, this isn't going to help them. They're never going to get solar on their house. They're, they're never going to have this, the, the zero energy rates. The reality of our problem is, is that we pay the highest energy rates of any community in the, in the entire state of Colorado. And nobody ever wants to address that. All we want to look at is, you know, in 30 years, when we're going to have cars that run on electricity and in 45 years, it's going to look like this. Blah, blah, blah. The people we represent care about today. What are we going to do about our energy costs today? And we do nothing. Absolutely nothing to do anything about our energy costs today. You know, we have Black Hills going for another rate increase over the weather event that happened. Our prices are going to go up higher and higher and higher. And something has to be done. This is untenable. It cannot continue. And we've had this argument that we've, we've argued it into the ground. It's, it never goes anywhere, but this is ridiculous. That we just sit around and talk about renewable, renewable, renewable. We don't address the fact that Counselor Atencio is the only one that brought it up to us two and a half years ago, three years ago. And you know, community choice was the way to go. I don't hear Counselor Atencio even talking about community choice anymore. But community choice is the way, wave of the future for this community. And if we don't grasp onto that, are you guys looking at community choice and in that policy matter? Are we, are we advocating at the state level through our representatives? We have one year left where we have the Senate president and the majority leader of the, of the House of Representatives. Are we actively lobbying them to get this community choice moving forward and, and not stalled at the PUC level? Because we need to reduce rates and we need to reduce rates now. And it's, it's not this, this, you know, what's going to happen 35 years from now or whatever. These rates need to go down and they need to go down now. So are we advocating for that now?
I, oh, I was going to say I can comment on that.
Actually, they're going to comment right now. Hold on.
Okay. I'll see what their comment is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, at this point in time, we're not lobbying anybody for anything. And I'm hoping that since we have President Atencio as being part of our group, that he will continue to pursue that with us. Right now, we have actually just been getting organized. And that might seem like it's taken a little while, but when you have all this knowledge and all these competing interests in terms of people that have this different knowledge about different aspects of energy, trying to focus it into one group that we can be able to become more constructive, that's what we've been working on. And so we welcome, welcome you, welcome President Atencio to give a presentation and maybe even become a part of the, of the group too. Councilwoman Winter, absolutely. We're up for other ideas. So at this point though, to answer your question, no, we're not lobbying anybody, but I don't think it's too late.
Counselor Winter, you had a comment?
Yeah, I did. And Larry can probably help me with this as well. There's a representative out of Boulder that brought forth a, to legislation for community choice. And you could definitely keep the provider you wanted or several other providers. I know there's some states that offer maybe 200 different providers that they can buy their energy through. And they can also, they can also purchase 100% renewable if they want to do that. The, it's my understanding that the legislation was poorly written, so it needed to go back to the drawing board. But then we had COVID, blah, blah, blah. So isn't that your understanding, Larry? Oh, and also let me point out that I was also told that this woman for Boulder approached Pueblo, and this was during when Pueblo was voting for municipalization. She approached Pueblo and Pueblo told her, she wasn't, Pueblo told her that we were not interested in that.
Yeah, just a quick update on that. Representative Edie Hooton, I don't know if she was from Boulder or not, but she did get legislation passed. But it was legislation that asked the PUC to study community choice energy. They're going to take this next year, or they've already started, I suppose. But they're going to take about a year to study whether it's feasible for Colorado to have community choice. When they come back with their findings, then legislation will go forward. Hopefully they'll say that community choice is okay for Colorado. But that's where that is. And you're right, it's, it's stuck in PUC. But that's as far as they could get in terms of community choice. I'm hoping that legislation will come out in, I don't know if it'll come out in '22, but in '23 for sure, legislation will probably come out for community choice. And, but you know how government works. They work at the speed of government and at the state level too. But that's where it's at. And I've been working with Representative Hooton for the last, you're right, two and a half years or so on that. And no, the city didn't tell Representative Hooton that we didn't want it because I've been working with her literally on a monthly basis.
I thought she had asked for a letter of support and we would not give it to her because we were in the middle of a municipalization voting.
Yeah, we got that.
Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Atencio said, that I've been communicating with Representative Hooton as well. And I've indicated to her that I support her efforts. Obviously, community choice is not something that's supported by the regulated utilities. So that's what the nature of the problem is. It's not that the legislation is poorly written. It's opposed mightily by the regulated utilities for, for obvious reasons.
Mr. Chairman, I, I might just state that we do believe that policy starts at the elected body, not within the advisory group. So if city council and the mayor gives us direction to lobby our legislators or lobby the PUC, we'll be more than happy to do that. Most of us are familiar with our, our legislative representatives. But we don't feel it's our place to initiate that. That's policy that needs to come from this body here. And so please, if that's something that you feel is important, give us some direction to help with that.
There's nothing more important than lowering our utility bills.
Mark, Mark?
Yes.
Mark, we haven't, we hired an attorney to lobby for us. So Nick, have you spoke to him about community energy?
No, we haven't. We haven't hired an attorney to lobby for us. I mean, we have an attorney representing us in the PUC, but I don't think.
I mean, if you're representing the PUC.
It's not a matter before the PUC at this point, as far as I know. In terms of any hearings or anything like that where an attorney would be.
There won't be because it's only a study bill. They're just, that's all they're doing.
Yeah, it was like 250 grand or something for the study.
I, I just had a comment on, on the policies. You know, the Energy Commission was formed and started after all the Colorado legislation was done. So, you know, this policy stuff, we need to look at. And I think, you know, community choice energy is, is one, one thing. We do need to figure out how to, how to reduce our cost of energy. And, and quite honestly, you know, renewable energy are the cheapest source of energy and it's levelized cost, okay? Meaning that you take into account the subsidies, the government subsidies. By far, the fossil fuel industry is more largely subsidized than the renewable industry. So keep that in mind too, okay? The, the commission is new. We're coming up this steep learning curve. It's going to take a time and a lot of meetings to, to to get to the point where we can make solid recommendations.
All right, everybody good?
Yeah, I just saw when you're talking about community energy, John was squirming back in the back.
I doubt that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
We'll move on to the Pueblo Community Health Center Net Zero Energy Building. This must have been planned.
There we go. Good, good evening. My name's Donald Moore. I'm the CEO at Pueblo Community Health Center. Thanks for inviting me tonight to talk about our net zero energy design at our East Side Clinic, which is scheduled to open. Okay. Joining me tonight, he's online, is a gentleman by the name of Corey Chin. He is our professional engineer on the project. So any rocket science oriented type questions, I'm going to, I'm going to punt to him. So by the time I'm done presenting tonight, I'm, I'm hoping that I can convince you that PCHC is contributing to the quality of life here in Pueblo. And that our East Side Clinic facility will indeed be a showpiece for the community throughout the state and possibly even the nation. Could we pull up those? Okay, yeah, sorry. A couple of things before I get into the net zero design content that I want you to know about the health center is that we, we're a trusted healthcare home for one out of seven Pueblos. The target population we serve are people in households at 200% of poverty and below. We don't turn away anybody because of an inability to pay. We're a nonprofit organization governed by a majority of the patients that we serve. And we employ the highest quality clinicians that, that you can find anywhere. This is the facility, a rendering of it anyways. And it's located at Eighth Street and La Crosse, if you weren't familiar with that. This is an elevation facing to the south. It'll be the, the main entrance of the facility. This is an elevation of the facility demonstrating what it will look like at nighttime or at dusk from the Eighth Street vantage point. And our goal with the design was to design a modern looking building, but certainly had plenty of elements reflecting the, the architecture around the community. The facility is going to make a pretty significant impact in terms of our ability to serve the community for decades to come. Our mission is to make sure that people in need of healthcare can receive it when they need it. And we've built this building at a significant expansion compared to our current facility, which is at the Park Hill Clinic located a couple of blocks away at Fourth Street and La Crosse. And as you can see by the numbers there on the chart, we're roughly tripling the capacity patient care wise. And I want to note that we are adding a dental clinic as a part of our service mix and will be the first dental practice on the east side in quite some time. So what's the connection between our mission and net zero design and renewable energy? Well, the New England Journal of Medicine found that changes in climate is a threat to health. And there's some information there on that slide that I know that you can see. The healthcare industry itself has a poor record of environmental stewardship and is actually one of the parts of our economy national, nationwide that is a significant contributor to greenhouse gases. So given that we have a mission to promote the health and of the community. And we are, in discussion with our board, we developed a vision of how could we use this facility project to promote our, our mission and at the same time, address what the literature is saying is a threat to community health. And ultimately, our net zero design is going to have benefits economically, and I'll address those later in the speech. But to our mission, we believe it, in the long run, will help lower disease and, and lower the death rates. This has been mentioned many times tonight, but Pueblo is actually a national leader in at least setting a goal to, to get to renewable energy by 2035. The city and the county have proclaimed that. And we see ourselves contributing to that community wide goal. Let's turn now specifically to the net zero design. I'm providing a definition that's pretty widely accepted across the country by the federal government, Department of Energy. It's a building basically that produces equal to or more energy than it needs to consume on an annual basis through the, through renewable energy. The, the formula that we use to approach our design was to couple renewable energy with standard, energy efficient design and sustainable design. So as the owner, Pueblo Community Health Center took our goals to our designers, our professional engineer and our architects, RTA architects, and pursued this process. And what we learned along the way is sustainable facilities do not need to be complex and unaffordable. And I have some evidence to back up that statement tonight. We use proven, tried and true methods to achieve our net zero design. What we did is actually not all that esoteric. So let me jump into the specific elements that enabled us to accomplish this goal. Because the building as designed is projected to generate more energy than it consumes on an annual basis. The first thing that's very important is building position. We situated the building with a long east-west access to support balancing of heating and cooling loads. In the winter, it is positioned ideally to absorb the maximum amount of heat to assist with the warming of the north side of the building. And then in the summer, when, when the sun is up higher, there'll be less warming on the biggest part of the building to support the cooling of the building. And of course, it provides maximum exposure to the photo. uh, to support the cooling of the building. And of course, uh, it provides maximum exposure to the photovoltaic system that, that we've installed and more on that in a minute. The building envelope is super critical. Let me back up here. The roof, um, in a regular building will have an R factor, energy efficiency factor of about 40. Our goal in the design was 60. As installed, we achieved R 73. Uh, the walls, the, of, of the building, um, a standard bill would achieve, uh, R 19. Our result was an R 29. And you'll see in the picture on the right, the blue material, that's a, a, a treatment to the, uh, exterior of the building that helps keep it airtight. Um, you'll see the silver material, that's a thermal barrier which, uh, retains, retains heat, retains and repels heat. Uh, an important part of our envelope, um, is the, are the windows. And, uh, we sourced these windows out of Boulder, a company called Alpin, um, windows. And instead of, uh, metal frames, which, um, are really good at conducting heat and cold inside and outside of the building, are, these frames are triple pane glass and are, um, the frames are actually a fiberglass material. It looks just like metal, but, but it, um, has less heat conduction from outside to inside, contributing to the efficiency of the building. I mentioned solar. Uh, we've installed a parking lot structure to the east of the facility. Um, we're, it's, um, extends, uh, behind the, the library and is, uh, adjacent to Eighth Street there. That's a hundred and twenty kilowatt system. And then on the roof, there is a hundred and sixty kilowatt system. And these two installations in combination can generate enough electricity to offset the entire building's net annual, uh, usage. Lighting upgrades was another element. Um, we conducted a pretty detailed photometric study and installed fixtures and laid them out in a way that was optimal. But the, the, the neat thing behind the lighting, uh, program is, um, it takes into consider daylighting and you probably noticed from the elevation pictures, the building has lots of windows. We are bringing, we have, uh, solar tubes on the, on the, on the, uh, roof of the building and an atrium in the interior of the building that brings in a lot of light. The controls on the LED lighting in the building will actually lower and increase based on the dot daylighting, um, that, that comes in from outside. So, during the middle of the day, we will be using the, the LED lighting minimally, but at night, um, we will obviously be using that to a greater extent. Typically, um, you'll see a, um, watts per square footage of, uh, of, um, point four one. Uh, I'm sorry, of point eight five in a standard build and we achieved a point four one ratio. So, more than a 50% reduction reliance on, um, electricity for our lighting in the building. All the energy needed to heat and cool the building will come from underground, uh, geothermal wells. We've bored 32 holes, 500 feet, uh, deep. There's piping that goes all the way down and comes all the way back up. That's 32,000, um, feet of, of this, uh, technology. Just to give you a sense of the scale, that, that's equivalent to a 10K. So if you're go-, to go out and run, uh, the length of all of our geothermal piping, you'd be running to 10K. Um, what happens is pumps move liquid through the pipes, exchanging heat with the ground, warming or cooling the liquid, um, depending upon the time of the year. And then it's pumped back up and heat exchange pumps throughout the building blow warm or cool air to condition the air. Another thing that I actually just found out a couple of weeks ago, I didn't know this about the design, but I think it's pretty neat. The way that the, the, um, heat exchange pumps work, if, if, uh, say the, the north side of the building is cooler than the south side of the building, then it's the middle of winter. Um, the system inside can actually move warm air from the south side over to the north side of the building to regulate and even out the temperature. So, um, using, using the, uh, the heat within the building and the cooling within the building efficiently and moving it around efficiently is contributing. This is a picture of the pump room that moves the, the liquid from the ground, um, all around those, uh, pipes. So let's look at the performance of the building. I've highlighted a couple of things. I think a lot of this is self-explanatory. Um, the middle column is data from our Colorado Avenue Clinic facility over on Mesa Junction. Um, at the time we built that in 2009, we, um, installed the largest photovoltaic system in Pueblo, privately owned anyway, at the time. There's larger systems now, but at the time it was the largest. So we've done this before and we've used that as a benchmark, um, to compare against the performance of the design building to see, uh, what kind of outcomes you can achieve. You can see that by more than half, we've reduced the energy utilization index by more than a half. And the energy cost per square foot is, uh, roughly about 25% of the performance of our, of our existing facility. So in terms of the economics of this, and, and, um, I'll use this to conclude. Um, we think we're going to get a good return on investment. We quantified the incremental cost because, uh, Councilman Aleph, it is expensive. The incremental cost to install these net zero energy elements was one and a half million dollars. We did, um, become eligible for a rebate from Black Hills Energy at the, uh, value of 127,000. So our net cost was just a little under 1.4. On us, we're gonna, using our square footage, uh, energy savings per square footage and, um, extrapolating that from the 47,000 square foot Colorado building to the 64,000 square foot, uh, East Side Clinic building, we're gonna save 105,000 dollars a year. And so that's a payback of 13 years. And we believe the, um, estimates are conservative. If we hit 13 years, it's affordable. Our board approved the project with that kind of a payback, um, as an assumption. But, um, energy costs are rising, as was just discussed earlier. And, uh, after one year of operation, well, actually throughout this first year of operation, Mr. Chin will be regularly taking measurements on the performance of the building. And after, after a year, he will be able to commission it, um, as net, uh, zero, uh, certified. So it's not just an assertion, it's something that we're measuring and documenting. And, uh, we're hoping that that payback period will indeed be less than 13 years. If you think about a building that's been designed and sized to serve the community for the next 50 years, if we can get a payback period within the 20% uh, life of the facility, we feel like that's, uh, gonna be a pretty good thing. I'll just conclude by mentioning that, uh, there is a organization called the National, uh, Building Institute Database. It's publicly available data. And currently, uh, Pueblo Community Health Center is the only healthcare facility, um, provider in the entire state of Colorado that will be operating a net zero facility. And there are only 10 nationwide. All 10 facilities nationwide are, uh, in a design phase or development phase. So, uh, Pueblo has the chance to have the first healthcare facility in the entire country that will be commissioned as a net zero facility. And I think, um, given the aspirational goal we have as a community, uh, PCHC's, we're honestly pretty proud that, that we potentially could be, um, a showpiece for the community. And I'd be glad to take your questions.
Thank you. Uh, questions, comments? Councilor Tensio?
You guys have done so much good, Doug on it. And, uh, the payback, that's, uh, that's the thing that impressed me the most. You're, you're right, with energy costs rising every year, that payback is gonna be, it'll be less than 13 years. And not only that, but, uh, the geothermal, the, the, uh, photovoltaic, the positioning of the building, everything that you, uh, uh, that your engineers put together. Now, you're a health man, so, uh, I don't know how much input you had in terms of, uh, of the design, but, uh, your engineers, uh, came up with the building that is gonna be just phenomenal. You, you're gonna lead the nation in, uh, net zero, uh, design. It really is. And, uh, not only that, uh, your customers are gonna benefit from it. Because the more you save on energy costs, the more, uh, services that you're able to provide for the community. And that's what it's all about in the first place.
Thank you. Yep. Yeah, hopefully this will be an example of, of doing it in an affordable, economical way and, and achieve the intrinsic good of, um, environmental benefits and, and, um, you know, controlling the costs of, um, powering the community.
Councilor Brown?
Thank you. I, I've had the pleasure of, uh, working with Donald on the Board of Health. And, um, he's good with numbers. He's kept us in line. So, uh, this is a great project and, um, I'm sure you'll be on top of it. Thanks again.
Yeah. Thanks, Councilman.
Councilor Warner, you got anything?
No, just, uh, thank you, Donald, for that presentation and I can't wait to tour the new facility. Thank you so much.
Councilor Flores?
Since we have the opportunity, I was wondering if we might let the engineer, Mr. Chin, say if, if, um, there's anything he'd like to add, uh, at this stage.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
Don, I was hoping that, uh, the gentleman that's on Zoom with us, uh, could have an opportunity to, uh, say a few words.
Uh, yes, I am here. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I would say, Donald and PCHC had a great deal to do with the energy decisions to be made on this project. Without owner involvement, and owner advocacy, oftentimes these projects fall apart. So, his leadership and PCHC's leadership has been very much appreciated through this. Good job, Donald. You presented the, the project very well.
All right. Thanks, Cory. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we'll move on to number four on our agenda, which is the Center for Health Progress, the Vaccine Equity Efforts. Mr. Hill?
Good evening. Uh, my name is Teresa Trujillo and I'm with the Center for Health Progress. And, um, I'm here to give you all, um, a fairly simple report out of some of the work that we've been doing to support vaccine equity here in our community. We have been working with our local health department, um, since 2020. And really, for us and the organizing work that we do, we normally don't do a tremendous amount of direct service work. Um, but the pandemic certainly, um, allowed us the opportunity to dig deeper and particularly among communities here in Pueblo, um, that are, are harder to reach. Um, Spanish speaking communities, migrant workers, as they came into our community, there were a lot of entities with a lot of questions who weren't being reached by, um, the regular mainstream vaccine and even the testing, um, protocols that were happening here in the community. So as early as, um, as 2020, we began partnering with the Pueblo Community Health Center. I mean, sorry, excuse me, the, um, PCD, PC, Pueblo? PDPH, thank you very much, Donald. PDPH, um, too many letters and acronyms. Um, and so our work with them was really about, um, creating some systems ourselves in order to reach some of the populations that weren't being reached in the community. And then also investing in those larger public health structures and helping to boost equity from within those structures so that, um, we could take advantage of the well-resourced entities that were providing services to our community, first in testing and then in, um, vaccination. So in December of 2020, when, um, vaccinations became available, um, we made ourselves available. We, we really, um, found ourselves in kind of the in-between space. We're not a clinic-facing entity. Um, as I said, we don't typically, um, do a lot of direct service kind of delivery in the community. Um, but we found that the need was certainly there to, to advocate and ultimately to accompany folks throughout the vaccine equity process. And so, um, in 2021, as vaccines became available for a larger number of folks, um, we began to, um, show up. There were, i- in those months of December to March, there were about 40,000, um, initial, uh, vaccines that were, that were provided here by our local health department. Um, and so we worked with them at the Old Sears, um, to provide interpretation and translation. Um, we, we were in those in-between spaces of working in the community where people showed up in order to, um, connect them with resources. We made appointments for folks so that they could, um, then find a friendly face when they arrived at a vaccine center and be, be accompanied through. We sat with them, um, after, um, to ensure that they understood, um, any side effects. And then we also made them second appointments. And if we were unsure about their ability to follow through, um, we were a part of helping to remove barriers to get them to those second appointments. And then ultimately, um, accompanying them, um, in smaller numbers through those second appointments. And now we're in the midst of, of, of completing some of those boosters. Um, so our work has been, um, I think, really, um, important. But I, I think really the, um, i- it's been really incredible to see the number of entities that have come to Pueblo. You know, the, the state has, uh, has come in, they came in after our, our public health department delivered those first 40,000, um, immunizations and they came in um, and began to provide some services. FEMA came in a, a little later. Um, and the introduction of FEMA, it was really interesting, the person in Denver who was assigned to FEMA was actually, um, uh, a, a woman who was born and raised here in Pueblo. Her name is April Lipinski and she, um, she graduated from Central High School. And so she was, um, a huge advocate for Pueblo to receive resources. We worked really closely with her. Margaret Comstock is the, is the person from Public Health whom we worked, um, closest with and she has a team of folks. Um, but really between Margaret and April and, um, community-based organizations like ours, we've been able to put together, uh, a task force that meets weekly. You all have probably been on a number of those phone calls or heard about those phone calls. You certainly receive reports as a means of the work that that, um, that, that task force is doing. And in our work, um, as a community-based organization, um, funding was not initially available to help support the work that we were doing. And there were a number of barriers. So we reached out to Councilman Atencio in early 2021 and asked him if the city might have some money available. Um, subsequently, we signed a contract to begin to do some work. Um, and you all gave us $10,000 to, to do that work. It committed $10,000 to us. And it, it allowed us to be able to get started in that work. And it allowed, um, private foundations and other monies, to catch up to the work that was being done on the ground. And so it was that initial investment that allowed us to do several things. Um, participate in the, in the task force and in getting the task force going. As a result, um, the task force in my communications with folks statewide and also on a couple of national calls, there are no task forces that exist like the task force that exists here. Um, there is no level of coordination that's happening like it's happening here between weekly, between community-based organizations, public health, state health and the feds. And that's happening here in, in Pueblo. And it's something that we should be very proud of. Um, part of that, um, process has been getting other community-based organizations on board, supporting one another to get the funding that we need. Um, and part of our work specifically at Center for Health Progress has been, um, trying to reach, um, folks who want to serve their community but haven't found an opportunity to do that. Initially, um, when law enforcement was running a lot of the emergency response, there was a pretty, um, lengthy process for folks to go through, including background checks and a number of other things in order to volunteer at any of the sites. And we were able to come in and have some alternative practices, um, where anybody who wanted to volunteer in any way, shape or form, we found a place for them to be able to serve. And there were a number of folks, even folks who are really pushed to the margins in our community, who really had a desire to step forward and to serve in whatever way they could. We had folks with, um, with language and literacy issues. They came and, um, figured out parking. We had a group of, of men. We started with one and he was scheduled to come for a four-hour shift. He showed up in the morning, he stayed all day. The next day, he brought four more people with him. And so all of the, the ways in which we've been able to, um, not just meet the need in our community, but to look beyond at the greater needs of, of how our community comes together. And so that was a, a real opportunity, um, for folks in our community that was only possible because of the initial funding we got. One of our means of getting folks involved in, um, in, in doing the work is providing economic harm offsets. And those are means, it costs people to be able to volunteer in the, in, in the community. And so recognizing that there are often costs associated with, yeah, we want you to go out and help this group of folks who just arrived as migrant workers in the easternmost part of our county. Well, then we need to provide them gas cards to get there. If they're working a four or six-hour shift in, in helping, um, accompany folks through, we're giving them a $50 gift card to buy dinner for their family. So they have to go home and cook on top of that. we're giving them a $50 gift card to buy dinner for their family. So they have to go home and cook on top of that. If, if they need childcare support, we're providing childcare support. And so all of that process, we're connected with local health so that all of our volunteers, we've got about 30 volunteers. We have a core group of about 12 and we have three who step up and lead the project and represent us on those weekly calls and are doing significant outreach in the community. We also offer rapid testing for those folks so that they can be tested on a weekly basis or if they have any fears in between. And those folks are very engaged in the work in the community. We are likely with what is happening with movement of public health and the state coming in to, to do some more vaccinations. We are likely going to pull back in 2022 on some of the vaccine equity work. But the work that we've done to build community in those spaces where community doesn't always flourish will continue to serve Pueblo beyond this crisis. So I simply wanted to fill you in on some of the, the work that we're doing. Happy to take any questions from you. And really, we, we owe a tremendous debt of gratitude to Public Health and our own Public Health Department. They're, they're doing tremendous work.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Warner, do you have anything?
I don't. Thanks, Mark.
Several weeks ago, the Health Department was here and they were giving us a report. And I brought up the fact that I had read, and I can't tell you where it was, but it was where you get all these statistics on COVID, that in Pueblo County, 64% of the Hispanic, the Hispanic population was not vaccinated. And I asked the Health Department, I said, what are you guys doing for outreach to this Hispanic group that does not want to get vaccinated or didn't have access to it? What, I mean, what's the problem? How come this isn't happening?
Few different issues. The first issue is that statistic is not fully vaccinated. So that includes both vaccinations and a booster. So those who are eligible and, and more and more folks become eligible every day for those booster shots, particularly folks who didn't get vaccinated until the summertime. So that's one issue is that that number continues to grow and it really is those booster shots and in some cases, the second shots for folks that have been an issue. The second issue is the problem with the system at the state level doesn't always track. They do a decent job track, tracking Latino surnames, but that doesn't really capture the entirety of the Latino population. And so there's some issues with the state's numbers on folks who've been vaccinated. And so it's likely that that number of vaccinations is actually higher but has been depressed. But there's not, there's no question that how well Pueblo does in terms of vaccinating particularly folks of color has a tremendous impact on what those numbers are for the state, which is part of why the state has such an investment in supporting Pueblo to make sure that those vaccinations happen.
So in your opinion, is it happening?
Yes, it is happening. There remain barriers. I think we've, we've worked through a number of those barriers, particularly a lot of it is timing. We have a number of folks who work and can't afford to take time off of work. So they want vaccinations Friday night after seven. They want to vaccinate Saturday after five. They want to vaccinate at times when folks aren't always making those vaccinations available. And so a lot of it has been planning, not just larger clinics that can meet large groups of people, but also trying to look at subsets of workers. And if there's a group of five together who are getting off on a shift, can we coordinate with someone from the Health Department to go out and deliver vaccinations to just those small groups? And so it, it is, it is that we've had to move on from the mass, mass clinics and really start. And we've been doing this for about four months, really get into those pockets of folks who are not getting boosted in particular.
Great. Thank you. Good work.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Um, you know, when you, when you mentioned, you know, some of, some of the folks that are unwilling to get vaccinated, you know, we haven't like 70% of the population east of Pueblo is unvaccinated and they all come here to shop. And I'm wondering what's going on out there? Are there any efforts to get those folks vaccinated?
It's interesting. When FEMA came in, they brought a number of opportunities for mobile clinics and they were actually turned down by a number of counties surrounding Pueblo. And so Pueblo is not just holding it down for our county and our folks. We're holding it down for folks in a lot of other counties around us who want to get vaccinated and protect themselves and their families. And so you're absolutely right. There are some counties where, where there are lower vaccination records and that has contributed to our higher hospitalizations. And I think will have an impact on us as we move through Omicron.
Okay. And then also, um, how many, how many special group vaccinations have you, have, have you been able to do?
We typically, we try to split our time between three different areas. One is meeting folks where they already gather, whether that's at churches or grocery stores or soccer matches. Or, you know, we have volunteers who'll traipse out in the middle of the fields if they see somebody working out there to make sure that they've had the opportunity to be vaccinated. I'll tell you, one of the barriers that we came up against is that for a number of migrant workers who came into our community, and we have a number of documented folks who are here on temporary visas to work. And we, we discovered that within the federal government, a, a number of those folks were coached in and, and oriented in their coming over to the US and felt like they had to lie about their vaccination status. And we knew that folks had not received vaccinations before they left Mexico or any of the other countries that folks were coming to, to work here. And we were able to work with those groups to get them vaccinated and to work beyond and to identify some of the issues that the feds were having in how they oriented folks to come into the community. But I think that part of our, part of our continuing work will be to continue to reach out to those entities, particularly families who, there are a number of families who've opted to settle out after having migrated for numbers. Every year we get a certain number of families who settle out here in Pueblo because there's opportunity to do that or they come at the end of the season and they stay here through the winter before they pick up migrant work again in the, in the spring. So I'm not sure I answered your question.
Oh, I was just curious of how many, how many vaccination clinics that you arranged for small groups, like at, at work? Or how many have you done?
So we divide our time between working in registration and plugging folks into already existing. So that, so the stuff that's existing Tuesday, Tuesday through Saturday at the mall, I'm plugging them into private entities like local pharmacies. And we've had to do a lot of work with those pharmacies about what their processes are. And, and then we do our own sort of, we try to do two to three events a month that are, that we sort of own. We've moved from vaccines being the center of, and the reason for those gatherings to targeting neighborhoods where there is lower vaccination, where there are lower vaccination rates and doing block parties for neighborhoods where we have some data where we're able to do door-to-door canvassing and encourage folks within a 10 to 12-block radius of that event to come and be vaccinated. And those are typically the events we own. And then there are generally about four or five other events monthly that, that are being done through Public Health, NOMI and some other entities that we provide support for and, and, and sort of get folks moving through those existing mainstream clinics. So I would say we're from eight to 10.
Eight to 10 outreaches you've done?
Eight to 10 clinics a month that we participate in.
Oh, eight to 10 clinics.
And so, but there's a huge range, like one of those events, for example, we did an event in October that, that reached about 600 folks and vaccinated about 150. Every event we have doesn't, doesn't have those larger numbers. Sometimes it really is, it, it, it's investing in those events and other times it really is doing that catching these small groups of four or five or six people who need a weekend vaccination or have some special circumstances where they need to get vaccinated away from those kinds of clinics. So it really is a both and. But typically, we're, we're responsible for anywhere from two to 600 vaccinations a month that we make happen and we accompany upwards of 1,000 or more other folks through mainstream processes.
Okay. How many, how many folks are you working with directly? How many in your group?
We have about 30 volunteers. Typically, that means about 12 to 15 and they happen to all be women. And there are three of them who really take the lead and have a leadership role in representing us on, on calls and coordination, who plan the events, who head up the canvassing efforts door-to-door. So it, it really is a volunteer group of about 30 plus because there are lots of families involved. We have a youth, a group of youth who do a lot of the door-to-door canvassing. So it's been really great to engage them and they do get some small economic harm offsets for doing that work. But it is really three individuals who are the core leadership who are driving the work.
Okay. All right. Interesting. Thank you.
We're good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. And thank you to Tracy for getting us set up to come out, come and report. Really appreciate that.
Move on to number five, the Black Hills Five and Six update. Mr. McWilliams. For some background, I asked both Mr. McWilliams and Black Hills Energy back in September to give us a report. If you remember, three and a half years ago, we went through a process for the Five and Six. And this is mainly for Mr. Schilling, myself and Ed Brown looking for closure. And to get an update on this, Black Hills can, could not be here tonight. They are scheduled to be here February 7th to speak on the, on the same thing. And hopefully, Mr. McWilliams will be here then too. So for tonight, we got Mr. McWilliams. Brian, great to see you.
Good seeing you guys. Thanks for having me tonight. I appreciate it. Well, yeah, it's been a little while and we've been working on a lot of different things. I think we've been working diligently on trying to improve our community over the last, it's been five years now. But what I'd like to do is I was going to start with a letter from Dana Crawford. She unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but if you guys are all right, I'm just going to read you her, her words direct. So, City Council, those of us at Urban Neighborhoods in Denver regret the unavailability to attend the meeting tonight. However, we want to write a holiday note to represent how committed we are to seeking a solution for the future of the historic Five and Six Plant in downtown Pueblo, as well as the 13 acres which surround it. City Council designated the power plant officially historic May 14th of 2018 with high hopes for significant progress. We have now been discussing this responsibly with Black Hills Energy for more than five years. During this time, we have outlined, outlined a master plan for reuse of the land as well as the buildings. And the environmental report has been completed by Black Hills Energy. On May 3rd, 2019, Black Hills and Riverwalk North Alliance and Riverwalk North Alliance is led by myself in partnership with Urban Neighborhoods, which is Dana Crawford. We signed a letter of intent that set forth the basis to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement of the Five and Six properties. We further requested the necessary ability to see the copies of the environmental report which Black Hills had conducted. We also introduced financing alternatives to clean up the power plant at the site at little or no cost to Black Hills. We all know there are probably some issues there and no doubt will be expensive to correct. Black Hills' primary goal continues to be to improve service and lower billing to its customers. But all agree the cleanup must transpire under Black Hills' ownership before a sale takes place to Riverwalk North Alliance. During the five years of dragging discussions, two major staff leaders have left the scene for Black Hills. Melie Jepison has withdrawn and more recently, our beloved manager Stephanie Bocken, planner for Denver, has departed mostly motivated by the never-ending Dana's refusal of reality regarding the fabulous redevelopment potential at the Five and Six property and what that offers for downtown Pueblo. This is a major loss for all involved. And in closing, we feel that much time has gone down the drain and too many free dollars from the state and federal sources have been directed other way, other places. Respectfully, Dana Crawford and Stephanie Bocken. I want to follow that up by saying that we also definitely are 100% still committed and neither myself nor Dana are going anywhere. We are 100% committed to revitalizing Five and Six. We would love to have it move faster. I know it's a tough process for all involved, but there are some options which I think more recently, Black Hills has gone to the mayor's office and started talking to people about the brownfields funds that are available. So if there was any ask from my side anyway tonight, it would be that the city and the mayor's office and everyone involved tried to push that along as quickly as possible so that we could help to direct some of those dollars that were initially written in the grant for the Five and Six cleanup towards Black Hills and try to get this cleanup done so that we can move forward with our purchase and sale agreement. And with that, I think that's where we're at today. As you can probably tell by Dana's letter, she's a little bit, she would like it to go faster. She's a little bit disappointed that it hasn't gone faster. And she would love to know what we could do to get more support from the community to push this along in any manner possible. So with that, any questions?
Thank you. Questions, comments? Counselor Flores?
As I understand, Black Hills has contracted for an environmental study and that, that study is kind of stuck in their legal department before it can be released. Although I do hear that it's, it's very close to their legal department making a decision. And that could come as soon as February, which is the date ironically that they'll be here. So is that correct? Is that's what is holding things up at this stage?
I believe that's part of it, yes. I do believe that right now, you know, we went through as a team, Black Hills Energy and Riverwalk North Alliance, and we selected the, the companies that would actually do the evaluation, the Phase One and Phase Two. We also selected the company that would do the environmental cleanup after the fact. So we're a little bit further down the road even than just the evaluation of what we have to do. We did that through a process of sending out an RFP to the world and interviewing quite a few different environmental agencies. That's been a while now though. So we would love to see how we get everything through Black Hills Legal. My understanding from Black Hills is that, yes, they are trying to push that as quickly as possible, but it is stuck in legal.
Right. And then as far as the grant that the city received, which is, I understand about $300,000.
Correct.
That that money could be, I, I don't know what the process is, I'd have to look into it, but that that money could be used toward the cleanup. And it's, it's not that. From my understanding, it's probably, you know, $100,000 to $150,000 cost. And so that's where we're hung up right now. Not so much hung up, February's not that far down the line, but
Right.
But that would be the next step.
Yes, it would be. A little background on that is the, all the environmental agencies came to us on many occasions throughout this process in the early days. We actually presented the opportunity to go for a Pueblo citywide assessment grant to the mayor's office. And then Shelley Dunham did a phenomenal job of writing that grant. Pueblo area-wide actually received the grant. A lot of what was written into that grant was Five and Six specific, as well as some other projects. We can use as little or as much of that grant for assessment. So the first is Phase One and Two determining what we actually have a problem with. And then the second part of that will be cleanup, which we can go for yet another grant. And we can get an unlimited number of dollars for that based on what our initial assessment actually tells us. So there's money right now in the system for the assessment. In our opinion, we should be using that for the assessment of Five and Six and speeding this up. And then we should be going right back for another area-wide cleanup and a targeted cleanup at Five and Six and wind up doing as much as we can to save the ratepayers money to do a cleanup. So that then Riverwalk North Alliance, our next step is to then sign that finalized purchase and sale agreement, which we've agreed to many times, many iterations, Black Hills and Riverwalk North, that we've agreed to many times, many iterations, Black Hills and Riverwalk North, that the sticking point is we need to get it cleaned up first, so we'd love to do that. And we'd love to have all of you as well as the mayor's office um help in any way possible to speed that along.
Assuming that you get over the hurdle of the environmental piece and uh you've you've got the green light to move ahead. I think the sixty four thousand dollar question is, uh is the is where are you at with the financing of this project, which
Right, we already have the money, so so that's one hundred percent of the purchase uh amount is available to us right now. And we are ready to move forward.
That was the question I think all of us were interested in, thank you.
Councilor Schelling.
Ryan, I'm really glad you're doing this because you've got the energy, I'm also glad you're young. Because this is gonna take a while.
Yeah, I'm not as young as when I started.
I know you're five years older and it may be, you know, the Riverwalk took a long time too, but
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks for all you're doing and, you know, keep going.
Thanks, Paul, I appreciate that, we appreciate the support.
Take a long time.
They do, and and it's tough, it is a difficult thing to do.
I'm just glad you're young, thanks.
Thank you. The other thing that I will mention when it comes to finances is um I recently also uh proposed another opportunity to Black Hills that if they even wanted to sell that to us now, as long as we got our um environmental taken care of in the legal paperwork, we could even purchase that property now and lease it back to them until they move out. So we have, we have about three or four different options to help speed it along and we would love to exercise one of them.
Am I, uh Councilor Weiner?
Yeah, so um it's my understanding that all of the buildings have been abated and and we're still looking at abatement of the grounds, correct?
Yeah, more or less, um the the five and six plan itself had some asbestos in it and that was abated to demolition standards. Um the ground is primarily the issue at the moment. And um anything else is very minor if there is anything within any of the buildings, so our focus is on the ground.
Okay, um and do you have a current contract with Black Hills? I mean, is it is it current?
Yes, we have a, we have two things, we have a um, as Dana mentioned in her uh in her letter, on May third of twenty nineteen, we have a letter of intent. And then on top of that, we have the purchase and sale agreement, which our lawyers have agreed to, their lawyers have agreed to. Um and the the one sticking point is we have to get it cleaned up first. So that's the only thing that we're sort of going back and forth on as far as the order, which is Black Hills would obviously like to have us sign everything ahead of time. Um our council is recommending that we get everything cleaned up before we actually sign.
So my question is, um do you have a current contract that's an agreement for twenty twenty one? I mean, are you still a twenty nineteen agreement?
We're still under the twenty nineteen agreement. And nothing, we could redate if needed.
Okay, what is the what is the purchase price?
Um that I think is proprietary at the moment, but uh I'll I'll let you know if that changes. But it is agreed upon by both parties.
Okay, and isn't it Colorado law that the owner clean up um before it's transferred?
Yeah, under Circa and RICRA.
I think the PUC requires that.
Yes, you are correct, and it's a it's a federal mandate under two different uh basically any large uh entities such as a a power plant or a large petroleum company. Um they, there are a couple of different laws that stayed under Circa and RICRA law that that does have to be taken care of by the current owner before a property can be transferred unless um extenuating circumstances are agreed to by both parties, which we obviously don't want to take on a big environmental risk.
Right, right, and I think the PUC is for the protection of the community, so they're not leaving, so you know, big um energy companies aren't leaving that leaving that to the citizens.
Yeah, correct, for example, if we just took that over today and then Ryan McWilliams gets hit by a bus and doesn't do the cleanup, then that thing never gets cleaned up, so we would obviously wanna have the uh the current entity do the cleanup and then do the transfer of the sale.
Okay, hey, thanks.
But you've offered uh you've offered ways to get it cleaned up?
Yeah, our our suggestion at the moment is definitely use these federal funds. Uh the federal uh agencies that came to us, the environmental agencies, they came to us and then we went to the mayor's office saying they wanna help and they want this to be a project that actually continues and goes through and is completed. So we would love to use those funds instead of using ratepayer funds. Um let's use the the funds that are coming from outside entity, which is federal, through the city uh for the assessment, then go back for the grant to do the cleanup. Anything that is outside of uh those funds, uh we would be able to tackle as we go down that road, but my understanding at the moment from all agencies is we can probably get that all cleaned up for little to no cost or for ratepayers.
That would be good.
That'd be great.
You know, with all due respect, I know that these deals take a long time, but five years are, it sounds like you're getting slow locked, do you feel like that?
You know, I think Dana and I both have uh days that we we could say that we are frustrated. Um and we understand that the people within Black Hills in our community wanna get things done, but they are driven also by a corporate entity. And I feel like even though Melanie Jepson, for example, who was the project lead for this to try and make everything happen, she um on multiple occasions, you know, said, hey, we're going as fast as we can and we wanna go faster, but due to legal or other issues within the organization, we we have to, we have to take another month and another month and another month. So so I would like it to go faster and I know Dana would like it to go faster and I know Melanie wanted it to go faster and I know Stephanie wanted it to go faster. So I guess my my statement to Black Hills Corporate at the moment was, would be, uh let's go faster, pretty simple.
Yeah, I'd say it, it's hard to have that feeling that uh Black Hills wants to get it done because it's been five years and it hasn't gotten done, so it's it's kind of discouraging that it's that we're where we're at today, which is basically the exact same spot we were three and a half years ago. You know, and my question would be, you know, city council went through many, many uh nights of uh arguing about five and six and what we were gonna do and how we were gonna move forward with this and you know, one of the big deals was we were gonna condemn the property, tear it down and be done with it. And just have a piece of land there that uh nobody, nobody could could
Finced and contaminated and not used.
Could use, but no, we said, we said that's that's not the way to go, there's a better way to go because we have a group, uh this North Riverwalk Alliance and Black Hills wants to get rid of it, they wanna move their corporate offices, everything's gonna going to work out, uh through the municipalization process, Black Hills was very, very vocal about how they were all about the community and they were gonna get fi- get very involved in five and six and make sure that this process gets done and everything gets handled. And again, three and a half years later, we're sitting here literally at the same spot that we were at when we when we began. And you have to ask yourself is even if this got done and the city pours in more money to or or this grant money to get things cleaned up and and is it gonna be another five years before we get to the point of uh uh of a buy sell completed and work starts to get done, it's just very frustrating. And I think as a community, that's what we get frustrated with. You know, our constituents get frustrated that government works at a snail's pace. Uh in reality, in 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 the real world, and you hate to say it that way, but in the real world, when somebody wants to sell a piece of property and they have a willing buyer that wants to buy the property, they work diligently uh to create the terms that make it uh make it happen and they 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 get things done. It just, you gotta think there's something else going on behind the scenes that has nothing to do with with uh what's going on and obviously somebody's not being honest with city council and somebody's not being honest uh uh about the process because there's there's just no way that you can go this long without moving forward and making something happen. And uh do you have something, Mayor?
Well, I just wanna make sure nobody leaves here with the impression that this is being slowed down by anything the city's done.
Right.
Um when Ryan came to me and said, hey, there's three hundred thousand dollars available for a brownfields grant that would help with this process, we immediately applied for that and got it awarded. To my knowledge, within like three weeks. Yeah, to my knowledge, nobody has come to the mayor's office and said, we'd like to use X amount of this money for uh five and six. Now, as I understand the situation, Black Hills has already had the assessment done?
They've they've done the first step of the assessment, there are a couple of steps in that assessment. But um there is still a lot more of the assessment to be completed, so there is still the opportunity to use those funds, yes.
So they haven't done the assessment, so we have no idea what the cost of remediation is gonna be.
Correct.
But Black Hills apparently has not agreed to pay for that remediation.
Um no, not yet, um what I was hoping is that again, we'd use federal dollars to do that, so we don't use ratepayer dollars. And um well, I do think Black Hills is willing to clean up. Um I don't think they are uh focused on the best use of the funds to do so. So this is another reason that tonight is important to state to everyone, so everyone understands the process that the best way to start moving forward is to use the Brownsfield funds for assessment, go right into the cleanup, ask for additional funding for the cleanup and then move this process forward so that we can purchase that property.
Yeah, and you know, we we haven't been leading that, but uh you know, and as I say, nobody to the best of my knowledge has come to the city and said, hey, we'd like to have this amount of money for this or or anything like that and, you know, I'll I'll be honest with you, I haven't seen the parameters of some of the federal infrastructure bills, but if we're talking about trying to get federal money to do this, that will take some time, obviously, that's not something that happens overnight, so that's, I guess, nobody everybody hoping that we'll be seeing anything down there in the next year or two, if we're relying on the feds to to come up and and do some cleanup, so.
The uh the other thing, just so everyone out there listening also understands is that this area wide uh grant is for anyone doing any project within uh Pueblo area. So if you have a project that needs a phase one or a phase two done, you can come to the city, talk to them about your project and more than likely, if it's just an assessment, uh some of that funding can be used for almost any development. Same thing then when we go to um uh any of the remediation, one of the things that has happened is that we have not used that money, so black or so Pueblo gets a little bit of a black eye when it comes to the feds because they said, we gave Pueblo this funding and you're now not using it. So one of the things that would be smart for us as a community to do is to find any project in which we can use this funding. I would put Black Hills five and six at the very top of the list, obviously, but any other of the funding that we can use for any other project, we should be using right away because I have had a couple of comments made to me at different social events saying, what's happening in Pueblo, why isn't this being used, are you guys just not doing anything down there? And obviously, it's very uncomfortable for me to answer that question when there are hundreds of people around and and I have to defend Pueblo yet again. But I am very happy to do so and I wanna just make sure everyone knows the the agencies that are um allocating these funds, they really want this to happen, they want Pueblo to succeed and they want this redevelopment to happen. They think this is one of the best projects on the books. So they'll go as fast as they can, it's not gonna be quick as as Mayor Gradosar says.
But but either the buyer or the property owner has to come to us and say, hey, we'd like to have some of this money. Or we'd like to have remediation done here or an assessment done, we can't just go to a private property owner and say, we're taking over and we're gonna assess the property whether you want us to or not, so that's
Yeah, Black Hills has to run this program and then utilize the funds in the manner that that are um appropriate for the grant. And and it's really easy to do, it's nothing that Black Hills wouldn't wanna do or or shouldn't do.
But they haven't done it.
Not that I'm aware of, so now, one thing that I have heard from Black Hills though is that they have gone just recently to um ask about how everything works. Um so I don't know if they're talking to Shelley or anyone else, I did give them Shelley's information directly a couple of times now.
Well, I think it's Scott Hopson they need to talk to.
And then, okay.
He's the one that's ramrodding this now, so, yeah.
And then, so I will, I'll reiterate that with um with Black Hills as well.
Okay.
Well, I urge you that there's, you know, there's an issue that you're not telling us or Black Hills not sharing or whatever, there's something that is holding this up. And it has to do with something that you're not telling us or the Black Hills isn't sharing with anybody. But you have a new city council coming on that's not uh really up to date on on any of this stuff. It would behoove you to explain to that council on February twenty seventh, when Black Hills Energy is here and you're here or whoever ever's here, uh to cut to the chase and make a decision. I mean, if the city needs to go back and condemn that property and tear it down and be done with it, then let's be done with it. But why should we be going for another ten, fifteen years of uh we need three hundred thousand for this, we're gonna do this, it's gonna cost the ratepayers, I mean, it's just crazy. You know, this stuff hasn't been done for something that none of us know about.
Mark, Mark?
Yes.
Same here.
Mark, if there's enough cash, things get done, so that's that's kind of my point. Um and and Ryan, you had said that um you were wanting Black Hills to move, are you looking to take over all of their office space as well?
Yes, all thirteen acres.
Okay, so are you looking to just purchase the lot right now or all of it?
No, the entire site.
Okay, just a minute, don't you have to prove to the PUC that you have the cash to actually finish the project before before you can even purchase the land, doesn't a certain amount of the total project amount have to go into escrow?
No, the only thing that the PUC has to agree to is the sale, they could care less what we do with it afterwards.
Okay, but you just said before that if you have a sale and it just sits there, you know, Ryan McWilliams just lets it sit there. There there, I think there's standards, I I kinda remember hearing that before because the city worked out um uh a financial agreement because you didn't trust Black Hills Energy to put your money in their escrow. So the city actually said, okay, we'll set up an escrow for you. And it was a pretty big amount and you said that you had the money. So you said you came to city council and you presented a letter that showed you had a hundred thousand dollars in your account, not several million.
It was actually fifteen million.
Okay, but the letter you presented us was a hundred thousand dollars, which was a long way from fifteen million.
That was the first one that was actually just for the insurance.
Okay, so you have fifteen million dollars cash sitting there.
So we no longer have fifteen million sitting there, but we do have the purchase amount sitting there. And that will be a private transaction and we are ready to do that next week if you want.
Okay, all right, sounds good, um I think that um if Black Hills uh sees sees all that and sees the cash, you you more than likely have a sale. Um otherwise, like like the like Nick said, if if um you know, it's not your development until until they until they turn it over, so I mean, we can't make Black Hills do something and if there's enough cash, it'll happen.
Anybody else? Thanks, Ryan.
You got it, nice, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll go to number six on the agenda, which is Borrias, Borreas Campers. That sounded dirty the way that I said it from the the first time, so.
I'm left, you're right.
You were specifically asked to be here by uh by us to, we just wanted to know more about the camper company.
Okay.
So what we're looking for is a uh just fill us in again on the company.
Sure, my name's Joe O'Brien with Petco and uh the company that we are talking about is actually currently uh in Arvada, Colorado. Um and they've been looking to move out of the area of the greater Denver area for quite some time. We started working with them in March of this year. Uh the primary reason, the high cost of doing business and number one and number two, real estate, as we all know, very difficult to get up there, especially manufacturing, where warehouse, that type of space. Um, this company actually started, uh, in 2016, but really been more of a, of a startup phase, uh, since, uh, uh, since 16, uh, more in the full operation now, because they were able to get some space where they were at, additional space, but they actually build custom, high-quality campers. Um, and I guess I always try to equate it to going up to BLM or the National Forest in the middle of nowhere and having a all-inclusive little camper. You know, and really, there's a, uh, all steel, a great suspension, but it's a pull-along with a, with a vehicle. And, um, this gentleman started putting it all together and, uh, has now, this year, right now, as of now, he's, uh, well into the, uh, July, August, September in pre-sales. So his product is very good. Uh, they're looking all over the state, they were looking in Grand Junction, they were looking up in the Cheyenne, Wyoming, uh, greater, as, as well, greater Denver, but you know, they, they came upon us and we started working with them. And the biggest problem that we had initially was really the, uh, trying to find space for them, because they were in the, kind of wanting to be in that 15,000 to 20,000 square foot facility, which even here in Pueblo is very difficult. Um, but the company itself has been, uh, doing very well, and, uh, we were able to finally locate them a space. Uh, they are, uh, going to be leasing a 17,000 square foot facility at the old Coca-Cola, uh, distribution, uh, property down on South Prairie. Uh, but the, um, you know, this is part of what we call our recreation, uh, cluster, uh, an exciting company. Uh, we've been trying to, uh, bring in a recreational-type related company for some time, and I, I think what, uh, and again, the chieftain did a very nice article about the company, if you read that, but, uh, one of the things that really checked the boxes for this company, which is basically Matt Reichel and his wife Maggie, um, is that it was in the Pueblo area being a great area for outdoor recreation relative to the trails, the bike trails, all the outdoor recreation we have at the Lake Pueblo. And that was a big concern, not just for being an outdoor person that he is, but also for their customers and also for their people, because they really want to move their, uh, most of their company here to Pueblo. So, uh, they, we worked out, uh, the, the deal basically is 29 jobs at an average salary of $56,000, $900 per year, pre-benefit, very, very well-paying jobs, excuse me. And then, um, the way that, that we put the, the deal together was that we will get them a, a rent reimbursement, which means, um, the, based on the number of employees they have, we will give them credit after those, after that first quarter, say that they report, they will get credit based on the rent. So it's really almost a no-risk situation for the city, number one, because, um, we'll not give them any reimbursement until the jobs are actually there. So, uh, great company, uh, they're excited to be here, they're very appreciative of everybody's work, including, you know, staff here, obviously with Petco, but also mayor's office and, and many, you know, uh, city council. So happy to a- answer any questions that you might have, um, but it is a, a nice company to have coming here.
Thank you. Uh, Council winner?
Yeah, um, I appreciate that, and I hope this is, um, um, going to be protocol in the future. I was talking to Mark the other day and just mentioned that when we, when we gather an executive session to talk about a possible candidate or a possible company that wants to move here, we're not even told the name of the company. And a lot of times, I mean, it's a year later and you're bringing this up to us, and we don't, we don't know what's going on. The chieftain knows no, more about what's going on than city council. So I guess what I'm saying is that, um, I would hope in the future that you meet us in executive session, tell us that you have a deal, tell us what the name of the company is, because as you know, in executive session, we're just told, oh, we're going to call this ABC company. I mean, we don't know anything. Um, and then also, I wondered if you could give us an update on the plastic to, to fuel company?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Rhodes, Rhodes, sorry, Rhodes.
Yeah. Yeah, just a, you know, quick comment, yeah, we, I, we don't have any, certainly objections. Sometimes with prospects, it takes some time, and so what we do is go to exec session, get it, kind of get guidance to, you know, how to move forward, um, change, how to negotiate what we're doing. Sometimes we're in a position where we might be able to reveal the name of the company, sometimes we won't, just to be candid, because we may be under an NDA, where for instance, we're under a big project we're working on right now, and there's, under no circumstances we'd be allowed to divulge the name outside of.
Right, I'm saying that after, what I'm saying, Jeff, is after the deal is made.
Oh, sure, no, I get that.
Right, I mean, we, we should be able to know what's going on before, you know, the chieftain. We're left in the dark, and a lot of these prospects don't even happen at all.
Sure, we, we don't, if you, be more than happy to come into a work session in between when we do the first reading and, and, and then the final session to, um, give more details on it.
Okay, can you give us, can you give us any update on the plastic to roads?
Um, yeah, they lease space. Okay. Okay, um, well, they have actually leased space, uh, to go back a little bit, it was a company that, um, it basically takes a, a plastic product and puts it into the asphalt process. Um, that, that company, uh, again, they, they, we were working on that particular project for about two years, uh, but they initially were, received some funding through the state OEDIT Office, uh, industry grant, uh, funding, but as we, as we moved forward, um, they were looking at, you know, coming in not just to Colorado, but creating a, uh, kind of a center here in Pueblo. Uh, and then, one of the main reasons that they did that, and again, they needed the plastic for the product, right? They have to have the plastic in order to do their, what they call, I call, high, kind of a high-control mixing type situation. Uh, and it just so happened, when we were initially talking to them, they were looking for a plastic product. Well, just so happens, TR Toppers out there at the airport industrial park has a whole bunch of that type of plastic, and it's a real thin type of plastic, it's not your plastic bottle type situation. But the company, uh, the, the process has actually been done in many countries outside of the United States. It has been going on for quite some time in the United States, more or less on the research, uh, stage or setup. And, um, what they did was, this company started talking to a lot of different, uh, entities, and they ended up with Dow Chemical. Dow Chemical has been doing this type of research for a number of years, they teamed up with them, so when we started talking to this company, we're like, okay, what about this process? How does it work? We were able to do a lot of due diligence, was due diligence with them, and the, the primary purpose was to get, figure out if other areas were doing this. And they had already started working with some of the CDOT, uh, not CDOT, but other Department of Transportation states. They were working in Texas, they were working in Arizona, they were working, uh, they did start doing some research with the, or talked to, uh, the CU Boulder, but we were able to talk to them about coming and bringing their, their company here, because one is they have a pretty good source of the plastic, but they also want to distribute it out across the United States. And talked a lot with their, uh, counterparts in different states. Uh, but the other, I think, key part of our process was that we talked to, and I get the acronyms mixed up, but I think it was NCAT, which is the National Association for, uh, Asphalt, uh, you know, kind of research, and they actually took upon EMC, which is the company that, uh, Lori's talking about, to have them do this testing for the next two years in their, their facility, which is, uh, located at Auburn University. So it has been fairly new product, and during the course of all of our, uh, discussions back and forth, went with, went and talked to the mayor, and we talked to the, uh, Transportation Department here, Public Works here, about what the possibility could be for them to use this product on some of the new roads that we have been paving. Um, just so happened, the timing didn't work out, but I think the, the Public Works Department got on board, they met with the EMC people, they were very excited about it, and, uh, because of the timing of the asphalt, you know, being put down this time of year, it got a little late, but I believe that there's a commitment from the city of Pueblo, uh, Public Works, and, uh, to look at an area of new asphalt to put this product into it. So I guess in the, the long and short of things, it's a, it's a great, interesting property or, uh, product. They have leased property, they're up and going, and they've been taking the plastic pro- uh, product from TR Toppers, so it really does, even though it doesn't go totally away, it goes into a, uh, you know, an asphalt product that can be utilized all over the country. So they're expecting and already have had, uh, roads being built in Michigan, Texas, uh, Arizona, and some in California, as well as hopefully here in Pueblo. So that's the answer.
And they're not, they have enough plastic here, they're not going to need to transport plastic in?
Um, at this point, they don't have to.
Mm-hmm. Cool, all right, thanks. I also have one more question, just out of curiosity. Why the cowboy hat?
Um, the cowboy hat tradition, um, as far as giving a cowboy hat, um, for those that aren't aware of it, so since, um, since way back and some 40 years ago, um, Petco has always been awarding, um, companies that relocate to or expand in Pueblo, um, cowboy hats. So it's just a tradition that was started, and, um, I think the first one that was handed out was the Sperry, the Sperry announcement back in 1984, 85, and since then, we've done the, the cowboy hats. I will tell you, it's kind of interesting, though, we've outlasted that style of brand and that style of cowboy hats, because right now, we've bought all the possible cowboy hats in that, in that style that we can, so we're having to change the style and trying to keep the same. Um, so we've actually been, uh, awarding these longer than Stetson has been manufacturing them now, so.
Interesting. You know, you just don't see anybody in Pueblo walking around with cowboy hats, so I just wondered why that came about. That's all, I just wondered why, I mean, it is kind of curious.
Yeah, I just want to add, uh, we had three, I guess we have three new city council people in the room tonight, there was another one here earlier, just for the purposes of their edification. How this happens is, once this item is on the agenda, on the council's agenda for first reading, in that council packet is a background paper and a copy of the agreement that's been entered into or proposed to be entered into with that company. So all the details are available to the members of the council in that background paper when it, it's on for first reading. So if there's ever any questions about what that deal is, there's that two-week period between when that's on for first reading and when it's on for final reading, that any of those can be cleared up, so. But that's available to all members of the council, uh, as soon as you get your packet for that first reading.
Yeah, thank you for that information. Uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go on to number seven, which is the Hub Agreement, uh, the mayor and Dan Kudose.
Yes, uh, this is a matter that's on, I think, for, uh, second reading, um, at the, uh, your next meeting in December. Uh, this is an agreement we have, it's an annual agreement with the Hub International. Kevin Kalbach is here, uh, this evening, that, uh, he can answer any specific questions. Um, I guess the question that was raised at the last council meeting was, why is, why don't we competitively bid this request for, uh, professional services? And under our Code of Ordinances, section 7-29, competitive bidding is not required for, um, professional services contracts, uh, and that's what Hub basically is. Uh, to make a long story short, I guess, we've been satisfied, happy with the services that have been provided by Hub. We have a special deal, uh, with them, basically. Um, ordinarily, insurance agents are compensated, they get paid by commissions. They place policies with you or for you, and the insurance company pays them a commission. We have a different relationship with Hub with respect to the policies they place with us. They do not get paid a commission on those policies, instead, they charge an annual fee. This year, I think the total annual fee for all their services is going to be $82,500. So, um, Kevin maybe knows better than I how long Hub has been providing these professional services to the, uh, city of Pueblo, but, uh, we, uh, we've been satisfied with the services that Hub has provided, and every year annually, they bring into my office, um, recommendations for insurance contracts for the next year, and they will bring in, um, policies that they've compared, so that, um, the actual coverage we're getting, they've shopped that around with other insu- with various insurance companies and bring to us those quotes that they've obtained. So, oh, I've been very satisfied with their services since I've been the mayor, and as I say, Kevin is here to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Council winner? You're on mute.
Uh, I guess I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Well, here, let me, well, then let me ask you some questions. I feel bad that nobody's asking you any questions.
This is the best, we'll get you guys back on the schedule here.
So just being a, uh, ju- just playing devil's advocate here, how do we know that these are good rates?
Yeah, so, thank you, Chairman Alef. Um, is, is my microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, a couple of things of background that are relevant here. One is that most of your coverages for Pueblo, for the municipality, are covered through SIRSIA. SIRSIA stands for Colorado Intergovernmental Risk Sharing Agency. Um, SIRSIA works with no other brokers that we are aware with, aware of, other than Hub, so it's a very unique, um, arrangement and unique relationship that Hub has with SIRSIA to actually serve as the designated risk management, um, official for the city. SIRSIA requires that that position is within every one of their insurers, and Hub serves as the outsourced risk management, uh, agent for the city of Pueblo. So that piece of that unique arrangement is one piece of the puzzle that's important to understand. In other words, other brokers cannot step in and do what Hub is doing for the city. The city could hire someone internally to serve as that role, bring in a very highly-qualified risk management advisor to serve in a similar capacity as what five specialists within Hub and my team do for the city. Um, so that's one piece, and you asked about kind of pricing. What I will say is that SIRSIA, as a pool, does offer the most competitive rates for a large property exposure as Pueblo or any municipality would be. Uh, those rates on property are unmatched with any, uh, standard carrier. That is a massive, um, benefit for the city and other SIRSIA insureds. In other words, the premiums or the contributions you pay to SIRSIA are significantly lower than what a traveler's or another standard insurance market would be able to come in at. Um, we know that from the various policies we place. Some of your coverages are outside of SIRSIA, and Hub does place those and bring competitive options to the table. And Chairman Alef, to your question, on those that are outside of SIRSIA, the competitive bidding process, in other words, we're the ones hired and trusted by the city to make sure we're bringing options, keeping carriers honest, and bringing the most, the broadest coverage with the most efficient premiums tied to that for consideration and recommendation. So I'm so glad you asked a question.
Thank you. I wanted to make sure that you felt wanted.
Well, I, I guess I have a question now.
Okay.
So what kind of risk are you managing? I mean, do you, uh, I mean, do you come in monthly? Are you telling the police what to do? I mean.
Yeah, and that, so, thank you, Councilor Winter, for that question. There's quite a few areas where Hub is engaged ongoing, even daily, with various departments within the city. I know that everyone here in the room got a copy of our service agreement, which lists about 32, um, bullet points of specific, uh, service lines that we, uh, engage in, but as a, as kind of a, a broad answer to that, um, we handle or we work with and advise on contract review for insurance considerations. Uh, we're involved in the Accident Review Committee every month, I personally attend that. Uh, we handle claims from front to back, as far as submitting claims, managing those claims, and working directly with SIRSIA to engage in resolution for those claims. And as you know, uh, the city of Pueblo and any municipality this size, there are emails flying every day and intense discussions around claims against the police department, claims against liability for slip and falls at a park, you name it. Hub's engaged, uh, very intensely on those claims reviews. Um, so from a loss control perspective, from a claims management perspective, and from a strategic perspective, looking forward on what is coming down the pipe and how to best approach, um, risk, you know, on a broad level, Hub's engaged, and I'd be happy happy to connect with you at any point, uh, even one-on-one to discuss, you know, further nuances of that.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet.
Uh, Councilor Flores.
Yeah, this won't take long. Uh, I, I think the value that you bring to the city is really the risk management piece. That piece in which we don't, uh, go down a certain road and get in trouble. And I, uh, with, with the new, with the four new city council people that will be coming on board, uh, you do this, um, on an annual basis and provide risk management as to how, uh, the city council should, uh, should operate. Uh, and you guys do a, uh, I think Tammy Tenoy, Tammy Tenoy is still involved at CERSA, and she does an excellent job of bringing that kind of information to the entire city council as to the do's and don'ts, uh, proper meeting procedure, uh, the legal aspect of, uh, how we could get involved in employment practices, liability exposures, and on and on. So, uh, I think that piece, sometimes people don't see that, but uh, when you look at our, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking of, uh, in the old days when I was involved in this, we had what was called a work, uh, a worker's comp, uh, modification. And, uh, it was always below, uh, most other communities in the state of Colorado because we took that risk management piece so seriously. And I'm assuming that you control that too at this point.
Yeah, and thank you. And that is really the, the the unique piece of this arrangement that most broker engagements don't, uh, don't handle, and you frame that very well.
It would be easy just to buy insurance policies and then just let everything fall where it, what, where it may and land up with very, very high premiums. But as a result of your risk management acumen and also, uh, taking that seriously, uh, I think we've kept our level of, uh, rates both on liability, workers' comp, and, uh, property coverage is at a low level. And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. All right, we'll go on to number eight, the staffing and tuition update. Uh, Mayor and Ms. Lano.
Councilor Aleth, can I just add that on January eighteenth, uh, CERSA is already scheduled, uh, for the, um, ethics, liability and best practices for elected officials. And so just a couple of weeks into the new year.
Yeah, that, that'll be a great meeting.
Right, um, Daryl, you want to put that power point up? So I, I guess there were some questions at the last council meeting and, uh, some information was, uh, requested with respect to uh, the staffing ordinance for next year, the salary ordinance perhaps, and the tuition reimbursement. So we've, uh, prepared some information here, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I've got, uh, I think Marissa's on the line. Oh, she's right behind me. Okay. There she is. So she's present in person. Um, but we wanted to update you on the vacant positions, the new position information for twenty-two. Talk a little bit about the enhanced tuition reimbursement program. These are all on your agenda for a final passage on, uh, December the twenty-seventh. This is, uh, the status of the vacant positions we've got now. And I think the important, um, information there is on the right-hand side that eighty-four percent of the vacancies in the city of Pueblo are actively in the process of being filled. And this tells you what, what, uh, status they're in. I mean, where, where they're at in terms of, uh, trying to get those positions filled. Uh, you know that we have struggled to fill positions in various departments in the past. I expect that, uh, that struggle will continue, um, especially in light of what the county did last week in terms of, you know, across the board, ten percent increases to their employees. They're somebody we compete for, uh, employees with. And when they raise everybody's wages by ten percent, that um, sort of sends a shiver, um, down, um, our spines, especially when we are in the middle of collective bargaining agreements that, uh, has set wage increases for our employees for those, those periods of time. So to a certain extent, we're not able to compete in terms of pure, pure salary dollars. But this tells you where we, um, where we're at in terms of those positions. These are the positions that, uh, are vacant right now that we're seeking to, uh, to fill. Daryl, like, I, can you move the the, uh, top there so I can tell what the title of the slide is? This is, is, I'm trying to tell if this is the, uh, yeah, okay, this is the vacant positions, not the new positions. So these are a, a list of the positions that are vacant that we're seeking to fill. I'll leave that up there if you have any questions about any of those. Happy to, uh, bring somebody up who is prepared to answer those questions. If not, I'll move on to the next slide. This is the new, uh, position information. So these new positions, as we discussed, were requested by city departments during the budgeting process. A total of thirty-four new positions were requested, and I think I approved twenty. Um, after we, uh, vetted them, talked with Human Resources and Finance, uh, twenty requests were approved. The approximate cost was one point six million dollars. All of these positions, these new positions were included in the budget that was approved by city council on November the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one. This is a, a list of those positions. Um, you know, licensing coordinator in the city clerk's office uh, for cigarettes and non-tobacco, and new complex estate regulations related to cigarette licensing. That's all been changed. Finance, a budget analyst, um, fire inspector, um, firefighter for the, uh, first response unit, um, firefighter, another firefighter, first response unit, two of those. Um, the program coordinator for housing, that's the second, uh, that's the second in charge basically in the housing department. Parts and Rec, uh, aquatics program coordinator, park ranger, um, senior planner in planning department, um, another senior planner in the planning department. Office assistance in the police department, public works associate engineer. As we discussed during the project, the, uh, budgeting process, a lot of these new positions were requested are positions that are needed to help deal with growth so that, um, developers and, um, contractors that come into city departments are not stymied by the lack of personnel and, um, their projects wait for somebody to find time to, to do them. Um, so that a lot of them are in public works department, the planning department, Stormwater's got a couple, three, uh, new employees that will, will be in Stormwater, uh, Wastewater, a field, a couple of employees in Wastewater as well. Stormwater and Wastewater, those are both enterprises, so they're not funded out of the general fund, but they still require funding. Finally, are there any questions about the, uh, vacant positions or the new positions before we move on to the enhanced tuition program?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have, I have, I have a question, I have some questions.
Okay.
So, back to the sixty-two positions that are still open. Um, do any of those need to, to go away? I mean, some of these positions we haven't had for several years. You've got twenty new ones, and also do the twenty new ones take priority over the sixty-two that have been sitting there for a while?
No, these are not positions that we think should go away. These are positions that we're actively trying to recruit people to fill those positions. We need those employees. We need those vacancies filled in order to deliver services to, to our citizens and to people that want to interact and deal with the, the city.
Okay, um, Marissa, do you know how long some of those positions have been open? Can you go back to that slide? Nick?
Sure.
With the, with the sixty-two?
Yeah, go up forward to. Um, and maybe just one more. I can speak, I, I can't speak to every single one on this list. I think the ones that you might be thinking about, um, um, Councilmember Winner are the unfunded positions that we have. That some of those have been hanging out for, you know, a number of years, um, unfilled and unfunded. So no funding associated with them. All of these sixty-two positions have funding associated with them, and they haven't, they, they, as the mayor said, need to be filled. Obviously, our, um, priority here is police patrol officers. That's been a, a real challenge. Those have not been vacant for very long. Um, and we actually have made offers on all of those vacancies that you see on that list. Um, some of these others may have been vacant for six months, maybe a year in some cases, but some have been vacant and held purposely. So I can give you some examples of that. So we have some positions that we're waiting for others to be filled in order to fill them. An example is the Assistant Accounting Manager, for instance. We, we really need that position, but we're waiting to fill the Finance Director before we, uh, fill that position to let that person do that. Um, we have, I'm trying to look at the list here to see if I could give you some more examples. I'm sorry. Traffic engineer, that's an example of one that's been vacant for, um, a couple of months now. We did fill it. After a long vacancy, it was very difficult to fill. That person did not work out. So now we have a vacancy with that. Some of these positions have been vacant for maybe three or four months, and part of the issue is, is that we post them and we don't get any applicants because our salaries are not always competitive. So we pull it back, reassess, see if we need to, to change minimums, if we need to look at the job responsibilities, and we post again. Um, on the list, on the previous slide, you'll see that there are a number of positions that are on hold until twenty-twenty-two. The majority of those are salary issue positions. We're hoping that the increased salaries, uh, for twenty-twenty-two may attract more candidates. So we're waiting a little bit to, to repost those. So um, I can't, I mean, I could go through each of them and, and research all of that and tell you how long each one has been vacant, but um, you know, most of these have not been vacant for too, for too long. There are a few, though, that have been hanging out there for a little bit for various.
The ones that are hanging there don't have, uh, they don't have a salary attached to them in the budget anyway.
They do. These are all funded vacancies. The ones that you're, I think you're talking about are not even listed here, and those are, there are some unfunded vacancies. But the, all of these on this list have funding associated with them, not only now, but also in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Um, and then what about the full-time aquatics director? Um, what do we have cooking? What, what's, what's happening with that?
Do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Um, um, so, uh, the situation with the program coordinator for aquatics is one that has been um, lingering from budget cycle to budget cycle. Right now, we have a temporary employee that steps up to manage that entire program. And, um, it really is a full-time position. It's not just a summertime position. There's a lot of different programming that has to go, um, into the position, planning, um, all of the, the AED and CPR and first aid program training that you have to do for all of those, that temporary and seasonal staff that comes on has to be managed by this person and signed off for all of the state requirements. So uh, Parks has asked for a number of these temporary positions that are managing major programs to be converted to full-time positions. That is what this is, is that there's a, a need for this position to work full times all, you know, year-round on recreational programs. Now, there may be some times where there's less going on, and so, um, the mayor did address that with the director of Parks and Recreation and said, you know, we need to have somebody that's constantly producing and busy. And so they intend to have that person support other recreation program planning um, that may be outside of aquatics, but they could use that person's skills to help them in that way as well. So that's the, the background on that position.
Okay. And then, uh, what about that engineer's job at forty-seven thousand? I mean, that's kind of, it's kind of low, isn't it?
Yeah, so the associate engineer ones are really are very entry-level engineers. So they're people that maybe just got their engineering degree and have no practical experience, so they come into the city as, as, yeah, very entry-level. Um, it's not engineers that, that are higher level. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So would that be an engineer that's putting in their three years, uh, of internship before they can take their exam?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
All right, that makes sense. Okay. All right. Thanks for explaining.
So you might just stay there. And this is the tuition reimbursement, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, let me ask. Uh, eighty-two positions in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, is that, that's quite a lot, right? Compared to others, other years?
Um, what do you mean eighty-two? You mean the sixty-two that are currently vacant and then adding the twenty?
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't know that it's, it's that different. Certainly, that's, it's a number of new positions for twenty-twenty-two that are being, um, proposed, but um, you know, we've had this level of vacancy for quite a while. I'm, I, I'm, can tell you, we're struggling to fill some positions, especially some technical positions. So.
What are we doing in terms of equity and, uh, inclusion of minority groups in, in hiring practices of the city?
Um, uh, Manuel Alcala, who is our civil service administrator, is, is really making a lot of efforts in community outreach and making sure that we're, we're getting the information in front of the appropriate groups to try to increase interest. Um, it's difficult, but we want to try to reach those groups to get them excited about local government careers in general. Maybe not even just a specific job that, that we may have available, but just in the concept of working for local government. So I know that he's making a lot of efforts. Um, he has contacts at, you know, the workforce center. He's also talking to, um, local church groups, um, and talking about their different fairs that they have and their events. So COVID's kind of put a little bit of a damper on those more traditional outreach efforts, going to job fairs and things. Things have changed a little bit, but there's a continual effort, uh, to reach those groups. I know that, that civil service is, is very committed to that.
Uh, our history in this city of inclusion hasn't been very good over the, uh, the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. Uh, I think the biggest reason, that the biggest, uh, obstacle is that, uh, people in the minority groups already know that they're not wanted. So why go someplace and apply for a job when you're not wanted? And, uh, you know, if you're, if we show people that, uh, they, we, we are inclusive, we, we just might get some people to, to apply, because those people are going someplace else. Uh, I'm on a, uh, sub, uh, committee with CML dealing with inclusion and diversity and, yeah, uh, amongst all the cities in Colorado. And what they're finding out is that there are qualified minority applicants out there, but they're not going to the cities because the cities have never been inclusive to minority groups. Uh, whether it's the, uh, general population of the employees or whether it's the police or the fire, they've, uh, they've never been. So uh, what you're finding is minority applicants are going someplace else. And, uh, when, in fact, they could be working for us, I mean, that, we're, every city is finding it very hard.
Yeah. Well, I would hope that changes, um, and that our efforts would, I mean, we try to make sure that, I mean, our whole goal is always to make sure that our workforce reflects the community that we serve. And I think we are doing better in some categories. Um, brought that demographic data to you all, I think, earlier in twenty-twenty-one, but, um, there's certainly room for improvement, and we're, we're always striving towards that.
Well, I hope so. Thank you.
Tuition. Tuition reimbursement program. So this is, uh, an enhanced, it's, uh, this is a program that's supported by all three city unions. It exceeds the current allowances in the collective bargaining agreements. But, um, it's on for your next meeting. It would provide a hundred percent tuition, fees and books up to two hundred, up to two thousand, uh, dollars per year per employee. The, um, educational program that they enroll in has to be job-related and has to enhance the skills that are useful to the city. They have to pass with a C or, uh, pass in a pass-fail rating system. Um, could either be a traditional college or vocational training if, um, their supervisor believed that, uh, the skills that they would get, gain would be beneficial, um, to the city. And then they have to agree to stay on as a city employee for a period of time after obtaining the education. Um, and I think it depends on, correct me if I'm wrong, Marissa, the, does it depend on, um, is it a set period of time for everybody or it?
Yeah, it's, it's a set period of time, and if you leave within that timeframe, um, you know, you would pay part, you would pay the amount back. The longer you stay, that amount to repay is reduced over a period of several years. The goal being that we don't. The goal being that we don't want to invest all of this training into an employee and then have them turn around and leave. That's happened in the past, so there's a, that's the effort to try to curb that from happening.
Questions, Counselor Schilling?
Well, if I stay, I work for the city, and for four years you give me a total of eight thousand bucks and I get a college degree, but I do a technical thing for six months, is everybody going to have the same long period of payback? I mean, how do you make it equitable? How do you choose that a college degree gets? You, you got to stay six years and you got six months something, so you got to stay a year.
It, we just set a standard period in which they have to stay, regardless of whatever the training or education that they're choosing is, just so that everybody's, you know, on the same page. We're not going to value the traditional education, college class more than we are the person who is interested in doing vocational training that, you know, is not in, in maybe in that professional career path. They're doing something else. We're giving them that same opportunity, paying the same amount, keeping it standardized on how long they'd have to stay.
Okay, so everybody's going to owe the same years.
That's correct, yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Where's this budgeted for in the, in the budget?
I don't think we know what it's going to cost at this point.
Do you mean an amount or where it's budgeted from?
I, I guess you don't want to go into my experience. My experience, the tuition program's been in there, but then they take away the money, and so nobody could get reimbursed.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Counselor.
I have a long history as a former employee of the city, and they've had this tuition reimbursement in the past, and then they don't fund it. So, well, you don't get reimbursed.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we anticipate that, number one, it has to be approved in advance so the department directors will know what it's going to cost and whether there's money in the budget for that. I think we'll find the money in the budget for it. Now, if every employee, every employee in the city wants to take advantage of this, that will cause us some consternation, and we'll have to look at the budget pretty hard. But I think we feel comfortable that, starting this program out, that we'll be able to find the funds to do that, especially given the city's financial position right now. And as I say, we'll know what it's going to cost us, what, what the maximum cost is before we commit to it because we have to prove these programs in advance.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, was it last year, year before, that we were going to do some internships with CSU Pueblo students? I think we did some.
Yep.
But I think that would be an excellent place to, to look for people. Bring them in as an intern, let them get their education, let them get an accountant or, or whatever, bring them in, and they're already in the system for a couple of years. I think internships, I think, is a great place to start people. Especially, you know, we have a industrial engineering technology program at CSU Pueblo. There's a civil engineering program out there. We can get a lot of employees out of there.
I think that's definitely happening. One area that we are having a very difficult time filling positions in is in our engineering area. And so I know that Andrew Hayes, our public works director, is actually taking advantage of this, not only from educational institutions, but also doing some internships through early release on military folks coming out of the military, and that's working very well.
A degree in industrial engineering technology for CSU Pueblo, it's one or two semesters away from getting an engineering degree.
Right.
I mean, we could get an intern from CSU Pueblo, pay him the, help him get the tuition to get the engineering degree. Boom, you've got an engineer. You've got somebody from Pueblo who's going to stay here for the rest of their lives. They're going to do.
We made a big push for that when I became mayor. Obviously, during COVID, that's a harder thing to implement because people are not around to supervise them and those kind of things.
No, I'm just saying, this is a great opportunity. If we're going to put this program together, there are programs at CSU Pueblo that are the first, one step underneath. They're an industrial engineering technology student from Pueblo. One step underneath an engineer, another couple of semesters with our program. Boom, we got.
Well, I, yeah, I think these are two separate programs. That internship program.
Accountants, accountants, the whole thing, yeah.
Will help us get new employees, and will give them some experience so we can benefit from them while they're in school. They get a chance to see what it's like to work for the city.
Yeah.
And might want to come. That's, that's a program that's separate from this, which is for current employees who want to further their education. This is what this, this does, but yeah.
No, I'm all in. I like the idea.
The internship program is great. I will push hard again for that now that we're back in the office and people are around to supervise people.
Good deal.
Counselor Winner.
Oh, I don't have anything else. Thanks, Marissa. It, it's just nice, as you can see, there's quite a few questions, and it's nice to be able to have an intelligent answer for our citizens when they ask us something. So thank you so much.
Any other comments, any other questions? Anybody got anything else? Counselor or Ms. Lano?
Just for reference to the budget, there was probably no more than ten requests for reimbursement in the budget for tuition reimbursement or a request to pay for additional class. And that started the, the mayor and Marissa's pathway to standardizing. The courts wanted to do one thing and civil service another, and so probably no more than ten in this last budget cycle.
Thank you. This is the last time I get to slam this hammer down. I just want to thank Ms. Tencio for allowing me this opportunity to chair the work sessions, and thank city council for putting up with me for a year doing it. And I appreciate all of you. We're adjourned.